A lot's happened in the last few months, especially the last couple of weeks. You know, we've had a bad storm in town and such. But we've lost our mentor. Most of you know Gene Kai. He was a revered person here in town. You could go on a thousand things to describe him. He was my mentor, my friend, and I miss him already. So if you could, you know, I don't want to stand you back up again, but keep Gene in your thoughts. And, you know, try to use him as an example of where we need to be in town and what we need to be doing to make our town better. And I'm going to quit before I start crying up here because I'm getting all choked up. Tonight's meeting is going to require a lot of ballot voting. So with the COVID operations as we have them now, we need to stay separated. So the way we're going to do the ballot vote is we have Jimmy Grace, which is back in the back corner. Jimmy, will you raise your hand? The masked man right there. And Tashina down here. And one or both will come to the aisle over here when it's time for your row to vote. And they'll hand you a ballot as you walk out of the aisle. If you will, go clockwise back around and come back into your aisle and back to your seat. If you wish to speak, raise your hand. We have a young lad tonight that's going to, again, get plenty of exercise with a boom mic. Are you doing that tonight, Byron? Oh, you're going to get some exercise. This is Byron, okay? Byron will come to you with the mic. Please be patient, you know? If I'm not seeing you, give me the old "hey you," you know, and I'll try and get him over there for you. Did I miss anything? All right, okay. So with that, Article 1, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $13,100,000, more or less, to be expended under the direction of the Sewer Department with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to pay the cost of designing, permitting, and constructing the state mandated upgrades required to the wastewater treatment plant located on East Brookfield Road, including the payment on all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether this appropriation will be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing, or by any other means, provided, however, that the appropriation and any borrowing authorized shall be contingent upon passage of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called debt exclusion, ballot question pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), subsection K, or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion? Right over here is Charlie Haddock. He's going to be reading the motion.
Charles Haddock, Chairman of the Sewer Commissioners. I move that the town vote to appropriate $13,100,000 to be expended under the direction of the Sewer Department with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to pay costs of designing, permitting, and constructing the state mandated upgrades required to the wastewater treatment plant located on East Brookfield Road, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to General Law C-44, Number 7 and 8, or any other enabling authority for such purpose, including, without limitation, all costs therefore as defined in General Law 29(c). Number 1, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. Any bonds or notes issued pursuant to this vote shall be general obligations of the town. The Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow all or any portion of the borrowing approved by this vote from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), the trust, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, and further, that the Select Board is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project. This appropriation and the debt authorization shall be contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called debt exclusion ballot question pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 59, 21ck. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law E-4420, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The approved upgrades would substantially extend the useful life of the plant and preserve an asset that is supporting wastewater treatment for the town.
Is there a second? Are you seconding, Don? Okay, Don Smith. Okay, Finance Committee would like to speak on it.
Karen Huback-Kylie, 12 Madbrook Road. I'm the Chair of the Finance Committee. Usually, we jump right up and we give recommendations. This is $13 million, and we would really like the Sewer Superintendent Jim Nyberg, along with his specialists, to be able to have a chance to do their presentation to you first, so that you have an open mind. I think it's very important that you are diligent, pay attention, ask questions. If you don't understand, ask it again. And if you don't understand, ask it again. So it's so important. We're such a small town that $13 million is a lot of money, and it's going to cost a lot of people a lot of money for a long time. Thank you for being here. Keep in mind, we're all here because we love our town. There's going to be a lot of different opinions. Let's all be respectful of each other. We're all here because we love our town. Thank you.
Jim, would you like to give your presentation?
This is Jim Nyberg, the Superintendent of the Sewer System, Sewer Department, excuse me.
We always seem to have fun with these technical things. One of the things that Ms. Huback-Kylie mentioned I wanted to highlight, we talk about millions all the time, and it always seems we talk about a million dollars, and it seems to become such a small number to us nowadays. I wanted to try and put a million in perspective in terms of the Sewer Department and things that we do. And I wanted to look at it in the aspect of time, because time is something we all have, and it's limited. If we took a million seconds, does anyone have a quick idea what that is? I'm sure none of us can do math that fast. But if we took a million seconds, 16,666 and some change minutes. It's 277 in 7.78 hours, which equates to 11 and 1/2 days. That's 1 million seconds. What we get asked to do on a regular basis is remove particulate in our wastewater down to what they call milligrams per liter, or parts per million. Our phosphorus limitation, as we will show you, from 1993 was designated at 1 part per million was our treatment capacity. That's the way it was designed. It's operated fantastically. As a matter of fact, with some small modifications, it's gotten down to less than that. We're currently meeting our limit of .2, just barely. That's 2 tenths of 1 milligram per liter, or 2 tenths of 1 part per million, or 2 tenths of 1 second. They're now asking us, and not asking, they're telling us, that you will now get down to 1 tenth of a part per million. .1 seconds out of 11 and 1/2 days is what we would be allowed to discharge at its maximum. That's quite a step. That's one of the big reasons we're here. We're looking at a plant that was designed in 1993 with a plan to move forward for 20 years. 1993 to 2020, that's 27 years of good service that this plant has provided this town, protecting its riverways and watersheds from pollution. It's been able to do this with very minor work that hasn't come at any cost to the taxpayer base. It's all been paid for by the users. There's been a lot of work that's been done, a lot of upkeep that's been done to ensure this plant is maintained. We got this new permit, and we said, this is going to be a problem. We've got a very large gap to make. It doesn't seem like much, go from .2 to .1, right? Pretty simple. It's just a tenth. It's only a 100% reduction. It's not a big deal. We can do that. The technology exists, not a problem. We're also looking at it and saying, now, how are we going to do this with almost 30-year-old pieces of equipment? 30-year-old technology? Now we have to meet the standards issued today by the EPA. That's going to be a tall order. That equipment's getting old. It's getting tired. It needs a lot of love. It needs a lot of money. It's a very welcoming machine. We're just waiting on its hard drive to wake up. While it wakes up, we'll skip forward in the presentation where we need to. Like I said, the facility was designed in 1993 to handle approximately 760,000 gallons per day of flow, and that's what we aim to continue. It was designed to treat down to 1 milligram per liter of total phosphorus. We now have a new mandate to reach .1 milligrams per liter total phosphorus. We also have been issued requirements for nitrogen reduction, and while we have not, thankfully, been issued mandates at this time that limit our milligrams per liter or our total pounds, which would be a loading rate to the river, and we hope that the state maintains its point that plants under 1 million gallons will not fall into that category of mandate. We certainly have one in our permit to optimize and remove as much as possible. That's a cute little tagline they like putting into a lot of things. Hey, winner. We get into slideshow mode? If not, I can live with that as long as we can advance slides. All right. It's going to be a little smaller than intended, folks. My apologies for that. So what I want to quickly do is run through, we want to talk about why now. Well, I think we've kind of done that. The EPA gave us a mandate. We're going to talk about the design criteria of the plant, which is what we were just discussing. We're going to review the facility's capacity to operate. We're going to discuss a condition assessment that we've already commissioned and had completed of our facility. We're going to talk about the technology we looked at during that assessment to ensure it was feasible. We're going to look at whether we should phase this project or not. Should we do it as one big project, or should we look at project phases? And we're going to look into the cost impacts to people. So as you can see, our average daily flow right now is about 350,000 gallons per day. Ding Fang Lu, one of our project engineers, he'll be here to help out with some questions So we're not looking to change the design flow of the facility. As much as we would love to impact more, we're concerned with the nitrogen permitting if we try to expand too far. Our maximum daily flow won't change. That'll still be the same thing. We've shown we can handle the flow the facility is designed for. One of the yellow items you saw up there was our total phosphorus limitation, being at 1 milligram per liter when the plant was designed in 1993, 27 years ago, now being a .1. Nitrogen to optimize, which was not listed in our permit before, and what they call recoverable metals, which is trace metals that you can find in the water. And they're talking about permitting us, or have permitted us, for copper, zinc, and aluminum. And at very small quantities, I might add, we're talking in what they consider UGL, which is micrograms per liter, which is even smaller than your milligrams per liter. So in receiving this permit, we looked forward and said, we need to do something. So we called upon our engineers to do a condition assessment of the equipment at the facilities. What is its current state? What do they expect of its life expectancy? What do they consider the facility's life expectancy to be? We're very happy to say they were quite impressed with the overall condition of the facility for 27 years old and the condition of the equipment that they told us in most cases had a 20-year life expectancy and was still operating well past its nominal life expectancy. That was wonderful news for us to hear. They took a look at our tanks and our buildings and said, you're getting towards middle-aged on them. A lot of times, you can talk 40 to 80 years, depending on the structure of the building and the tanks. Concrete obviously lasting longer than some of your steel or wooden structures without significant help. And found all of our tanks are serviceable with minor rehabilitation work. Again, great news. We do not have to demo it. We don't have to demo any of the buildings. We looked into one of them, and I'll get to that. We can reutilize everything we have. So that condition assessment came out and said, okay, what do we have to do? And we prioritized it. And unfortunately, looking down this list, and due to the age of the majority of equipment, a lot of it came in as some very high priority changes. Some of it would have been lower priority, but we looked forward and said, we need to do something about this. It's going to start failing. So we did a condition assessment. They completed it. We've looked at it. The Sewer Commissioners have reviewed it. They recommended we move forward and develop a plan for the facility and said, what can we do? How can we meet these new, very stringent limits that were being mandated to meet by the state? So the engineers said, okay, well, what can we do? Well, let's take a look at the technology that's out there. And we reviewed four different technologies. Cloth media filtration, which we are currently utilizing one of. It's not the same thing. We'll get there. We looked at a product called Actiflow, a product called Comag, which are both ballasted flock products, and a company called Clearaz, which uses algae to reduce phosphorus in the water. Clearaz Technologies is a fairly new technology. We looked at it as an overview and said, we rated everything on a scale. We looked at that one and said, you know, it's got some great points to it. It looks like it even has some potential for resale value on the algae. Almost, not quite, almost. But the constructability of it being a new product, not many people are going to be familiar with. It's very unique. It's very high-end. Construction's going to take some extra work. It's going to take a highly skilled staff to put that together, and it's not our staff. We said, the operation and maintenance of it is a little bit unknown. We don't have a long-term history with this product. It's not like saying getting an oil change for your car. You kind of know what that price range should be. We don't know what the operating costs of this are going to be, because there aren't that many of them around that can say, hey, these are the average numbers. So in rating it, it got one of our lowest ratings. Almost? Hey, there we are. Down. Yep, next. And next. We've worked through that. Condition assessment, reliability, there we go. So, thank you, Ding Fang. Thank you. So we're starting on my left, your right, on the Clearaz chart there. As you can see, the higher the score, the better in this case. Clearaz came in a little low. The big parameter for it that came in low was its cost. It came in at extremely estimated high cost. Now, if it wasn't for cloth media filter, its next contender, we would have pushed on that cost, because we think there were some discrepancies between what was submitted as a very rough estimate quote, which is how we got all these. These are not firm quotes. They're a ballpark estimate. You say, hey, about how much would it cost me? And you put some figures to it and a little bit of estimation to assume what the ground conditions would be if you've got to dig up a tank. We don't know that. We haven't bored holes yet to find out what the ground would be, so you've got to put some level of condition assessment on it. So we also looked at cloth media filtration. That one's got the highest score up there. It comes in as one of the best for removing particulate. It does what we need to do for metals removal, sludge production, phosphorus removal, as well as it can handle variations in our flow and loading. Disruption to the operation of the plant is minimal, and the length of the construction schedule is one of the shortest to implement. For operation and maintenance, it is not very complex. It's very flexible, and the quality of the equipment and instrumentation is very high. The overall estimated capital costs are the lowest of the four technologies we evaluated. The projected operation and maintenance costs are middle-of-the-road for it, and grant eligibility is high. That gave it a top-end score. The other two you see, Actiflow and Comag, are both what they call ballasted flock. We grow a biomass in the plant right now. What ballasted flock would be is to put a larger, heavier object, and we're talking microns, don't think basketballs, into the water for that flock to grab onto so it would settle faster, which would mean we can produce more flock which could do more work as itself. Then you start adding a lot of chemicals to it as well to make sure we can precipitate everything out of the water, meaning drop it out of solution. These also get very high marks for their performance, very similar. As you can see there in the blue columns, they're almost identical. The same with constructability. These technologies have been around well over 10 years. They're becoming very common for what they do, which is phosphorus and metals and nitrogen removal. All right. You can also see their operation and maintenance costs are quite similar. And in that green bar, you'll see they're quite similar as well to cloth media filtration. Where the big win came in is the overall cost of them. As you can see, cloth media filtration has one of the largest bars there, which means it has the smallest overall cost. As such, we move forward, looking at cloth media filtration as a primary system to look at here. What that will require is some process modifications at the plant, not deletions, not anything like that. So we're looking at modifying our existing process and existing tankage to do biological nutrient reduction, which will help biologically remove some level of phosphorus down to around .5 milligrams per liter, as well as augment our nitrogen removal. So that'll be reutilizing all of the tanks that you see up there that currently exist. Most modifications will happen in the aeration tanks, where we will need to install that baffle you see in the left hand of those four identical-looking tanks. That'll be made most likely out of fiberglass reinforced plastics, very withstanding to water, not very expensive to install. We will also have to replace the mechanisms, which are almost 30 years old now in our clarifiers, which aid in settling out all of our solids to allow a clear liquid to escape. This will give us effluent that can go through that potential new filter so that we can meet our permit and discharge safe water back to the environment. This is an overview of the plant as it currently sits with some of the recommended changes. What we're looking at here is our influence structure, which is that top-left building, is going to need some maintenance, some equipment changeouts, our screening, our grit removal, which is any of the inorganics or rag material that doesn't dissolve in the water that comes in. That needs to be removed so it doesn't damage our pumps and equipment. We want to install a new, improved septic receiving facility, which would allow us to increase the volume of septic we take. It would also allow us to feed it through the plant at a more consistent ratio. Right now, when the trucks come, if you have septic systems, the trucks come, they pump it out, and a lot of those guys come down and visit me, and they take and open the back valve of that truck and dump it into a big tank we have. What putting in that receiving system would do would allow us to feed that in a little more slowly so the plant can take it better. We don't have to run as high of some solids numbers, which contribute to higher disposal costs. That would also allow us a system to bill the haulers, not necessarily based on their good word. I'm sure they are all quite trustworthy, but I'm sure if we all ran a business, we'd all try to save a buck where we can, too. That would put a flow meter in, as well as grit and screenings removal for that which is heavily laden with inorganic materials, eggshells, coffee grounds, and the like, anything that may go down your drain when you're washing the dishes, when you're washing out a coffee pot, your clothing, dirt and soil from being outside in the gardens, and the like. We would then work on the aeration tanks, which are those four large square tanks there in the middle. Again, installing baffles and doing a little bit of replumbing to the tanks, but not changing their overall structure. Those tanks flow through to their clarifier units, which is where we need to modify our chemical feed system from a single-point addition to a dual-point chemical addition. This will allow us to actually utilize less chemical, because we can then add a portion of what we would need and then retest for it downstream and only add what is necessary then to get our permitted limits met. So this would reduce, instead of right now we have one point, we've got to do it all in one shot, which requires us to do a little bit of overdosing to ensure that the variations in flow and loadings are met with our chemical dosing. From those clarifiers, it currently flows down into this lower-left corner where you can see there's a red X. That is our current cloth media filter. That one would be decommissioned during construction. And over to the right-hand side, you can see a red box, which is currently where our UV system is and will stay, upgraded to the latest technology which could save us about 30% of its electrical usage, and install a new cloth media filtration, actually two of them, because now they will be required of our permit, not, at the time that was installed, an optional piece of equipment. If we don't install the second one, it cannot be considered a required permitted process, because you have to have a backup for all permitted processes available. We would install everything in that area in a greenhouse-like structure. And I say like, because we're still working out some of the finer details, but we're not looking at putting up a full concrete, heated, insulated, cooled-type building. We're trying to come up with a way that we don't need to live in it, we just need to be able to work in it, usually in the not-nice weather, because that's when things go wrong, in the middle of snowstorms and rainstorms, or in the cold days when we've been out there trying to hose something off with a garden hose, and it's about 10 degrees out. It gets a little slippery for us. We would need to work on the administration building, that's in the building there on your right, about halfway up the slide, to manage size, ADA requirements, and a few other minor adjustments in the building. What we're looking at is there's some plumbing issues, there's heating, there's ventilation issues, and with the addition of these permitted parameters, we would need to increase our available lab space to manage that. Currently, we don't meet all of the requirements, and if we start tearing into that building to meet a lot of those ADA requirements for doorways, hallways, toiletries, and the like, we're going to end up hitting the value of the facility and needing to bring the entire facility up to current code, which could be as costly as a new building. That doesn't include allowing additional space in the laboratory for the additional testing that will need to be done. And the last thing is to rehabilitate our biofilter, which is up there in that top square in the center, in that green area. It's a biofilter. It does odor control for us. It is not supposed to be green. It's supposed to be a nice wood chip-looking pile, and it's done through a biological process to uptake a lot of the sulfur compounds that you would typically smell. That's what we're looking at doing. That would be the entirety of the project. So everybody's now staring at me. All right, that's great. I understand about a third of what you said. But what's it going to cost? So we looked at that, and we looked at four scenarios. The blue line here that you can see, starting up at the highest point, always great when numbers start at the top, at least it's working its way down, that assumes state revolving funds only, no grants, no loans, at their 2% rate. We can do better than that. That's kind of a worst-case scenario. We looked at Scenario 2, which is the red line, almost at the bottom there, which is about the best-case scenario. That's assuming a 40% USDA grant for nutrient removal. That is assuming SRF funding, which is state revolving funds, which is a 0% interest loan, as well as the potential for 10% principal forgiveness. Again, those are all percentage-based, not dollar-based. We looked at Scenario 3, which was to take this project on potentially in phases. Can we bring this in and do just the minimums? Can then we do, you know, five, 10 years down the road, do another set? And then five, 10 years down the road, finish these upgrades? We looked at it and said, we can. A lot of those grants I just mentioned are good, really, once. The first section of it, we'll get our 20% to 40% matching grants from USDA. We'll get our SRF funding. We get our principal forgiveness, and it's fantastic. and it's fantastic. We start off really strong. But what happens is our costs skyrocket because now we're no longer eligible for those grants because we're no longer doing nutrient reduction. Now we're just doing rehabilitation. And then when we step into scenario three, it brings the totals even higher. Now, those are adjusted 3% per year for inflation for anything past the initial term. And then scenario four is that purple line, and that only assumes we get the minimum of this USDA grant I keep referring to, which is 20%. And it assumes that we get the SRF funding at 0%, but we may not get the principal forgiveness. So we're kind of looking at those two scenarios being a best case and a worst case. We don't see the feasibility monetarily speaking of phasing this project because, as you can see, we all start at the same time. But if we phase that project, there's another 10 years of paying on this, and at higher dollar values. That, we did not think at the time that was in our best-case scenario. It does, in the start of this project, give you a lower buy-in cost to the project, but overall, you end up paying about 25 to 30% more for the project. So what we looked at is, we took those numbers at 13%, at 13.1 million and said, well, 20% grant potential, maybe 40%. We're telling you today, we'd like to make sure that we have enough, because those grants aren't guaranteed. But USDA has been very vocal about being out there and helping rural towns. We qualify for USDA rural development. They've been here in the past to help us out, and they'll be here in the future to help us out. We also took a quick comparison across some towns that did upgrades in about the last 10 years. We put ours there on the left with an overall estimated price tag and cost per unit. Now, cost per unit, everyone says, well, what's that mean? Cost per the number of things we're touching. Did I get that right, Mark?
Got it right.
Thank you, sir. I'll introduce you guys to these fine folks here in just a moment. Moving over, we took, took a look at Spencer, that's our neighbor a little bit west of us. They're doing an upgrade very similar to this right now. They've since tried to reduce some of those costs, but that was our data that we had at the time. And they were looking at costs of almost $25, $27 million to do an upgrade to their facility, which is not much larger than ours. And their cost per unit cost went way high. Looking across, we looked at Sturbridge, we looked at Maynard, we looked at Middleborough, we looked at Gardner, and we looked at Uxbridge, all of them in our general geographical region. What we found is that the median price was about $17.6 per gallon. And you can see that varying line there refers to what their cost is. So you can see where we came in is just below what the average would have been for all of these plants. A lot of these plants have had significant upgrades here recently. I know I've personally seen the Uxbridge one, and it was quite well done. I'm quite looking forward to seeing what could be on the plans for ours. And then we looked at a timeline, because with our mandate from the EPA comes a time limit to it. And the EPA and our current NPDES permit, which is the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which our permit started, this, this permit started April 1st, 2019, I thought it was a great April Fool's joke as well, ends April 1st of 2024. And in that permit, it states, you will do a study in the first two years to determine if the facility is capable with minor capital improvements, such as changing chemicals, doing some jar tests, maybe adding a secondary chemical, and give us a report. Our engineers have since done that report and found that we cannot meet it by simply changing a chemical or adding a little bit more. It's just not happening. It's not capable of it as we sit. And they recommended moving forward with an upgrade. In doing so, they start, they aided us a little bit more time, because if they'd said it was possible with small capital improvements, we'd have about two years to complete those, and then we must meet the mandated 0.1 phosphorus limit. In needing a full construction project, we now have the balance of the permit, which was 60 months from April 1st, 2019, which puts us at April 1st, 2024, to meet 0.1 total phosphorus. Not attempt to, to meet. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mark Thompson. He's our project manager from Kleinfelder Engineering. And Ding Fang Lu, you guys can stay there. You don't have to come up front. I won't make you stand up, Mark. I know it's, you've got a little bit of a bum leg going on. These gentlemen have worked hand-in-hand with us and worked to the utmost of their abilities, exceedingly smart. If there's any questions you guys have here, which we'll open the floor up to in just a second, and if I can't answer it, I know they'll be able to. Mark's been working with this town for 20...
About 20 years.
20 years now? So he's quite familiar with North Brookfield and has an understanding of our needs in this small community. Ding Fang Lu, you've been an engineer working with this for...
25.
25 years. We have quite the knowledge base that we've been working with, and it's shown just through their initial discussions, through this planning. So with that said, I know there's, I can already hear the gears turning. There's a lot of questions. Let's get our poor friend ready to run.
Is there anything to be said? Surely, there's got to be a question.
I was wondering, um, the environmental factor of it, like, is the different options, they have more or less environmental impact on, like, the water as a whole? Like, is there one that's more environmentally friendly option than the others? Are they all about the same?
Of the four technologies we reviewed?
Yes.
So the technology we've chosen out of this is a filtration media. So no, so it's not adding excess chemicals. It's actually passing the water through now a five-micron filter and removing particulate and keeping it within the treatment process for treatment and ultimate sanitary disposal. All of these would reduce those levels, some of them using more chemicals. In the case of Clearalis, it's utilizing algae, which I will agree is a natural resource. That came in at about four to five times the cost of the filtration system, which is why it wasn't pursued further. And I'll be honest, I'll tell you, I forced those guys to dig into it. Because it's new technology, they were a little uncertain, but they were open to checking out something new and were very excited initially about seeing their numbers and what it was, what they were showing capabilities of. And then we saw the cost.
Yeah.
And we swallowed really hard and went, well, unfortunately, we're not going to be the first one in the Northeast to have that.
Understandable.
But it's, it is out there. It is a green technology. I love that these things are coming out, but unfortunately, they come with a very high cost.
And then I have one other question. So what is, what is the cost per person going to look like in the worst-case scenario? Like, what is the, about, estimated tax increase per person homeowner estimated to look like at the worst case and maybe even the best-case scenario? I don't know if you have an estimate on that. And also, what would it look like if only the people who had sewer paid for it? Do you know what those numbers are by any chance?
Off the top of that, there was some discussion, but a lot of that cost is going to depend on housing values and markets going into the future. As you know, that's a very volatile market. There was discussion of, you know, a couple hundred to several hundred dollars a year. You're looking at, if you just push this through, the sewer users base, you're going to affect only about 950 connections in town, and you're looking at an average increase of, I want to say over the 20 years, the sewer rate would probably increase close to 50%.
50% every, like...
Not every year. This would be an overall during the course of that. You'd talk in immediate, we looked at it from two different perspectives, and we've actually already, we started pursuing that methodology while we were discussing the potential for this with the selectmen. You were looking at a spike increase of probably near 30% to a sewer user on day one this construction happens, and then continued regular incremental increases. That, now, that's assuming scenarios two or four happen where it's a good case. Obviously, if scenario one happens, it would be higher. Scenario three, where it was a phased process, would start and it would have a smaller spike at the beginning, but two subsequent spikes to maintain that.
And I, because I do know that's something that people have said, like, I don't have sewer in my home. Why do I have to pay for it? But I do want to remind everybody who is listening that lots of our public buildings use the public sewer, and that we're all a community, and we should all be trying to do what's best for the community as a whole.
I agree.
Mr. Pucci?
I'm curious. What is your confidence in the way that the project group that you've been working with has managed to strike the balance between cost-effectiveness and technological advancement for the wastewater treatment system?
Very high. We're looking at taking a very technical approach, but not putting it to the point of having too much technology and saying, hey, we're the new Google hub for this. We're looking at balancing usability, reliability, and operability. So it's, it's got to be a multi-phased approach.
Do you think that within a, do you think that within a 10-year frame of this project that the technology utilized will still be able to maintain a, a sense of modernity to it? Will this technology remain relevant and on top of the ball within the next decade?
We're looking at a facility and designing for 20 years in the future. So we're, yes, we're looking at today's numbers, but also looking at what is ahead for the next 20 years to ensure we're not coming back to this.
And within the next 20-year frame, when there would be a hypothetical next improvement series, do you feel as though the technological step here will be able to make the next improvement 20 years afterwards less expensive than the current one?
That one I couldn't answer because I'm going to need a time machine to go see what technology happens in 20 years.
We'll get to you back. We're working that direction.
Quick question now. Is this state mandated? If we fail to pass this, then what?
We have, if we fail to pass this, the state can come down and issue a consent order with administrative penalties. Typically, those are in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $25,000 per day of noncompliance. That's a very scary number. If we don't pass that and they start those fines and we start the process when we do, you're talking at least two to three years to reach that. Right now, we would be hoping, if this passes, to be complete construction the beginning of 2024. This is not an overnight process. This is a, we're looking, we're, we need to do a design, then we need to bid construction, and then we would need to then build the facility.
You had a question in the back?
While, while he, while he's walking back there. We're, and we're asking for 13.1 million. We're not asking to take all of that today. We're asking for the ability to borrow up to that value and only take as we need.
You had a question?
Kathleen Previa, Ward Street. I'm assuming the selectmen are in supporting this endeavor?
Well, we do in principle, because the fines that will be levied, if they don't upgrade, because it's a DEP mandate, the town would be responsible generally for the fines. So as the sewer is a enterprise fund that the users pay for the costs, we had to weigh the fact that users should be paying for it, but it's an exorbitant fee that our limited amount of users couldn't possibly afford. And the fines are going to be issued against the town generally, so we think we have to invest in this to avoid the fines. Because what's going to happen is, if we don't do it and they issue fines, the town will have to pay the fine and still do the upgrade. So we'd be out good money after bad. So we do support that.
Anything else to be said? Okay. The gentleman right back here.
Well, this is just in response to what Mr. Kylie just said too, but even though you talked about possibly bringing on just the users, didn't you also say that a lot of the septic uses in town, that ends up there anyways too? So they're still paying for, technically, for the use of this facility?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Just, just clarifying that.
And Mrs. Petritas right here.
Michelle Petritas, Smith Hansen Road. To that point, I actually pay to have my septic removed. So I pay the service to the man driving the truck. He pays the town. I, I'd like to know, so this reads like the state mandated upgrades that are required could cost 13.1 million dollars. The entire scope of the project doesn't fall under the mandate, so I'd like to know what portion of the project, dollars-wise, as close as you can estimate, is state mandated for the phosphorus and other testing limits?
Include, for the state mandated portion of it and the ancillary equipment and testing that's going to be required, you're probably looking at about 60, 65% of the overall project costs.
And can you tell me, for the project that needs updating, the equipment that needs updating, the 27-year-old equipment, how much of this is outside of the mandate? And can it, the project be split so that the users are actually absorbing the cost of their equipment versus the overall town paying for that portion? Because that's aged out. I mean, they've used it for 27 years.
That would be taking, are you suggesting taking this as to multiple projects or doing one project with multiple payment options?
Whichever one works the best for everyone concerned.
I, I think that's going to be one we're going to all need to sit down and figure out the percentages on. I mean, I can tell you about what the percentage of dollar value would be, but a lot of that equipment is utilized in both scenarios.
So here's another question. 27 years this equipment has been being used, and we are now looking at something that we hope will last 20 years. It doesn't appear to me, and I'm new to finance committee, that there was any kind of capital plan looking towards the next improvement. Is that the case? Was there no capital plan? And will we institute one going forward, since we know that upgrades are required in the future?
Unfortunately, I can't speak much to what capital planning was done in the past. I've recently come here back in 2018, at which time I was handed a new copy of the permit with the mandate in it. So if there was a capital plan, at the time I was handed that on day two, I was unaware of the capital plan. I was just aware of the mandate. As far as capital planning goes for this, we do a lot of that in our end of it, on the maintenance and repair side, and looking at a piece of equipment, saying, we need to do maintenance to it. Is it worth repairing it or replacing it for its cost? So there's a lot of that that happens on a regular basis, as I could speak to some of our pumps and our pump stations that have recently been replaced by the users, because their repairs were no longer worth their value.
Okay. I think this is my last question. No guarantees. Your timeline shows voting on several phases of this out in 2021. So is it, what can we move forward with on this project without voting for $13 million today? Like, what, what will a no vote stop you from doing at this point?
A no vote will stop us from doing any further work on this. We won't even be able to design a facility to be ready, shovel-ready for a bid. That's considered part of this overall project, is looking at and saying, we need to create a design, we need to create blueprints, we need to create a scope of work, and then we need to be able to have a set of bid documents that we can publish on a site like CommByz to then solicit bids to produce that, to do that work and produce a facility.
And is that what you had mentioned would be an estimate of one or 1.5 million dollars?
A rough estimate, yes.
So could the town not vote on the first, first part that's required instead of 13 million today? Would that be...
We could. My, the objective in coming here with the entire project was to not have to come before you about once a year, asking for more money to continue this project.
Do you not like us?
I do like you guys. I wouldn't have come here if I didn't.
Because we love your presentation. I, I do. It's great.
I, I can come every month to your FinCom meetings if you'd like.
Sure.
Also, can I clarify that if we don't bid the project as a whole, the grants that we ask for and the USDA funding that we ask for, those things that we ask for, if we don't ask for it as a, as a whole, then it'll be harder for us to get the funding for that later if we piece it out?
Piecing it out, as she's referring to piecing it out, would be to bid the engineer, to do, approve the engineering costs one moment, and then approve a scope of work for providing construction documentation and bid work the next, and then go, coming back again and procuring further money, then take those bids and ask for money to do construction work, all with multiple votes and multiple meetings.
But a much clearer idea of the actual costs at that point, at that juncture, no?
We feel that the estimates that we have at this time are fairly accurate based on the construction being done in the Commonwealth.
We know about a no vote, but a yes vote, how is that going to affect our pocketbook? We need to know that if we're going to vote on it.
A yes vote will put this as a ballot question for you.
How would it affect our pocketbook?
Meaning, it's a...
We're voting, we're voting basically, 13-1. In the long run, in the end, how is this going to affect our pocketbook?
It would come out as a debt exclusion on the taxes, which there are several items coming off of.
Dollar sign.
Again, I can't give you an exact dollar sign as to what it would be for each piece of property. I don't know all those values off the top of my head.
Let's say the average home in our first year will be finding value.
Let's, wait a minute. Let's, let's let him... Let's, wait a minute, let's, let's let him speak. He, he already said he does not have those figures for the very bottom line of this.
Well, does the board of selectmen or the finance board or somebody have those figures?
How can we vote on something when we don't know how it's gonna affect us?
Please address your comments to the chairman. I can't hear you.
It seems as though the vote taking place today is going to be on whether or not we begin legislation and drafting for the proposal. Is that, is that the case?
Negative.
No.
What this vote is about is whether or not the town will agree to appropriate the said sum in motion towards this project, and to do a debt exclusion to, to pay for that debt. Now, that debt exclusion will also go through a town vote at a regular election, an up or down, yes or no vote. So this is just the first phase of this, and that's to approve a, a set number of dollars towards that project to get the project started. Now, it, again, and it doesn't go anywhere until after it goes through the, the election part of it.
Right.
So, this is the first phase.
Question to that. Will, will there be any differential? Will we be paying any money at the end of this first phase of, of, of this town meeting?
No.
Okay.
Not until after it, it goes through the election portion.
So for those that are worried about their potential financial costs, the, they can have the ability to discuss those further on in, in the phases of the election of this?
I'm sure that the, the figures will be in flux to a certain degree.
Okay.
Now, again, until it gets through the, the election part of the process, it's, it's just in the process.
Great.
Nothing, nothing happens, no tax bills increase or anything until after the election.
Okay.
And once that proposition two and a half has been agreed to, then, or the override, excuse me, is agreed to, that's when the monies would be secured-
Okay.
-by the treasurer to, to fund that project. So.
I have one additional question, and-
We gotta move on, Mr. Pucci. If you would, please make it quick.
In regards to grants, do you have any ability to measure how effectively and how aggressively the group that you're representing has pursued local, federal, and national grants for this project?
We've reached out federally to USDA, we've reached out on the surface to Long Island Sound, which is operated by Fish and Wildlife. We've already been in discussions with the state for the state revolving funds and their grants based on that.
Can you make a pledge to the community today?
Mr. Pucci, please.
All right.
Joe, I see you. Dave had a question. You still got a question, Dave? Joe? Stand by. Stay there, stay there. He's coming to you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Joe Hallway, the fire chief. I just want to remind everybody, you know, the fire department's had a, a committee going for three years for a fire station. And I, I met with Jim, and I understand the mandates, and I would support any mandate that's coming down the road that's gonna affect the town. But there's a couple of questions that has to be asked, and if this helps you with your finances, we've done a lot of homework. We've been meeting every two weeks for three years to develop a plan to build a fire station and hopefully move the DPW into our old building to take care of a lot of mandates that we're gonna be faced with too. I want you to remember, we have projects, other projects in town besides just the sewer. The fire station was built in the 1800s, and needless to say, with that said, the Department of Labor has incorporated inspections and new rules and regulations through OSHA, and neither, neither the highway department nor the fire department fall under any of those. We don't have any exhaust systems that are mandated. So needless to say, we could spend easily a quarter million to a half a million dollars just to take care of a couple mandates coming our way and still have an old station with trucks everywhere in 1800 that was built for horses. So with that said, we plan, the committee had worked diligently to hold our process off until financial impacts were taken off the tax base. Ladder truck, junior, senior high school construction, the library renovation, and the police station, we're all gonna be coming off the books by 2028 at a savings of about $650,000 to the taxpayer. Now, to give you an idea what this might add to this, if both projects were to move forward, is the fire station right now, if we were to borrow $8.2 million to build the fire station and take care of the DPW at the same time, would be $1.47 per thousand. So let's just say, at, looking at the books within, at $260,000 home would be $338 a year. So you divide that by 365, it's 91 cents a day, to build the fire station, take care of the highway department at the same time.
Okay, Joe, where are you going with this?
Well, well, they're asking a question about the tax dollar.
Right. In regards to this project, not the fire station.
Well, these numbers I'm giving you are gonna give that.
Okay.
So if you, if you figure at $8 million at $1.47 for a 260, what's another $13 million gonna do? So 13 million's gonna be, if what's $338, $338 for a $260,000 home per year, then 13 million's gonna be close to $500 easily per taxpayer, which I don't know how many taxpayers are actually on the sewer plant, but everybody's gonna be paying at least that. Now, this is worst-case scenario, if Jim doesn't get the grants, which we've been trying for a $2 million bond now for three years, and we're, we're being told by our senator, forget about it with the COVID. So worst-case scenario, if he borrows the 13 million, it's gonna cut, we're gonna be looking at close to $1,000 between the two projects, asking people on a tax base, $800 and something dollars. So my feeling really was, Jim and I talked about it, we were hoping that the drop-offs would come close to being able to absorb the two projects. And it, and it's possible, if all the grants came through and everything happened the right way. But the reality of it is, if we both, if he went for 13 million and we go back in November for the 8.5 million, which we desperately gotta get out of that station, get, the DPW is having their lunch in the room that has a bathroom in it. I mean, so we got other buildings and things to do. So our feeling was, if it can't be met, within the tax base of what's dropping off, and that was the whole plan, was to come forward with a plan that as these tax numbers fell off, it would be costing you guys nothing for the new fire station. It would be the same, close to the same amount of money by 2028. But now we get, all of a sudden, we got a 13 million that we had no clue was coming down the pike, not our committee anyway. And, and I, and I certainly understand Jim's plight. He came into a, a can that I think's been kicked down the road, like some of these other buildings over the years. And we have a very aggressive administration now, trying to get things cleaned up. So can we take care of three things at once? If, if he was able to get a phased project of, say, $6 million and our $8 million, that puts us pretty darn close to the drop-offs, maybe just a little tax increase for everybody. But also, you know, without the user fees going up and all those things, everybody here that has a septic system's looking at another $400, $500 on their tax, easily, without the fire station, unless he gets the grants and stuff. So if my septic fails at $30,000, who's gonna help me pay for that? And, you know, so I, I just, it just seems to me it needs to be planned out more, it needs to be looked at better, and how can we phase it in and take care of three buildings at once? Can we take care of, can we possibly take care of the, the initial problem that he has and then come back, like you said, in different phases? And I know where he's going with it, and I, we met about it, and I, I wanna work with him on it, but I don't think anybody really realizes that, you know, we're sitting on almost $3 million worth of equipment in that, in that station that's getting ruined by humidity and all kinds of issues. But we have mandates also, so it's just something to think about. We definitely gotta get rid of the mandate that he has, there's no question about it. But it just seems like it, it popped up out of the blue, and so if my, if my, if my project's gonna cost you $338 a year, and I know that's what the tax rate would be, $1.47 per thousand, so you, you drop on another 13 million, and just do the math on it, you know, so between the two of us, you're looking at about $800 a year. And everybody's paying for it, whether you have sewer or you don't have. So I, I just kinda wish it got brought up and planned out a little bit, a little bit more in, in segments, so that we could've all worked together and got all three things done at once, and then just move forward as we need to improve his project. That could cost us more in the long run, but once we borrow 13 million at that tax rate, all these other projects are pretty much off the books.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Is there anything else to be said? Who's pointing? No, right there. He had a mask on, I didn't see him.
Appropriations shall be raised by taxation. We just got a dissertation on that. Transfer of available funds. Where's that come from? Do we have available funds? It says transfer from available funds, or borrowing. And if we borrow, this would be the time to borrow with interest rates being as low as they are. And other means? It seems a little vague. Can you address those three items?
I believe you're reading from the warrant article, not the motion.
Well, Article I.
Yeah, that's the warrant article. So the language is different from the motion in the article. The way the article has to read is to raise, borrow, or appropriate. The motion read to, to do it through the Prop 2 and 1/2 override. So you can disregard the other language, it's, it's just the legalese of the way it, it works through the warrant system. So the motion governs, the motion is to do the Prop 2 and 1/2 debt exclusion, which means you vote on it tonight, up or down. If it's, if it's approved tonight, then it goes to a ballot vote on the next election, and the people vote to approve it that way. It has to go through those two steps to be finally approved as a debt exclusion. The rest of the language in the motion just speaks to the fact that we're applying for grants and other funding sources that will reduce that number. So that's the answer to the question. We're not going to the current sources. There are no current sources for that kind of money.
Right next to it.
By the time, by the time this goes to a ballot vote, will you know anything about the grants by then?
We're working, we're working towards them currently, but without some of this funding to be able to develop our plans further and have actual blueprints and designs for it, they want what they call preliminary engineering reports followed up by plans, specifications, and all of that. And some of that, we would still need to go apply for those.
But the answer is no. When it comes before a ballot vote, you, you still won't know.
Well, the ballot vote tonight? No, sir, I won't know any further.
Okay, anything else? Hang on, Dave, right over here, Byron.
All right, I got two quick questions. One is, are there any plans to expand the overall system to get more users on it?
We've actually been working on that as separate items. We've had meetings with East Brookfield to attempt to go down Route 9 with the upcoming paving project and get around the Lake Lashaway area, both for North Brookfield and the potential for East Brookfield residents. We've looked into that. I've also reached out to West Brookfield to try and have a discussion with them about potential usage in their area. We've looked into the possibility of searing any other areas within North Brookfield. A lot of those are hindered by topographical challenges and the requirement of pump stations, which can become quite costly to put in for a small amount of users.
All right. Also, if we get grants, are we gonna be roped into using specific shady contractors like what happened with the high school?
The grants that I'm aware of, no. I'm gonna actually look to my engineer, and he's saying, no, we would not be roped into specific contractors.
Okay.
These are grants, as far as my understanding is, that they cover percentages of cost, not mandating who can and cannot do work. Did I get that? Okay. He's nodding, he's had an agreement with me.
Okay. Byron, right behind you. Thank you, Dave.
Hi, Debbie Maggio, 27, Fulham Hill. I wondered what sewer has currently in retained earnings and if that's going to be applied toward this balance to reduce it to taxpayers.
Retained earnings for sewer, last time I was aware, was somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000, but that also needs to be reserved partially to ensure that we have monies available for emergencies out in the collection systems, to ensure that we're not dumping raw sewerage down the street, managing any emergencies that could arise at pump stations as well, and before any of these upgrades happen at the facility. A lot of our retained earnings were depleted because we've come before you several times in the past two years to do work regarding this project, and we've spent close to $250,000 of our retained earnings to get this project this far, which was doing preliminary engineering reports to work on securing a $25,000 grant from USDA to work towards furthering this project. We've also pulled out money to do some addendum work on that, including testing of different chemicals and adaptations, as well as looking at a pilot test of this, this technology to ensure it works. All of that being done ahead of this vote, with the project to move it forward as fast as possible, so that we can meet this very stringent timeline.
Yes, sir. Get to you in a second, Joe.
Okay, you want to? So, obviously, you said with this, the fines are the big thing. If we don't complete this by, what, 2024, you said?
They've, they've ranged in the past, I've seen between $10,000 and $25,000 per day.
Yeah, but this, you said, starting 2024, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, now, I'm trying, I wanna keep this on topic as possible, but given that's what we're facing in the next three years, given the other projects in town that, you know, we're kinda looking at, is there, is there anybody can answer this? Maybe, is there fines? Because there are, I know there's mandates for other buildings as well, but is there fines if those don't get done? There is. Like, so for, like, highway or the fire, is there fines, were we looking at, if that doesn't get done as well?
OSHA has changed regulations regarding the fire station, and Joe did touch base on that. So to answer your question, yes, there, if, if OSHA does come in, there, there would be fines that would be issued. So we're, we're in a spot, really. And, and financially, looking forward with COVID, with the monies, we're okay this year. I'm exceptionally concerned about what the state is gonna have for monies coming up in next year and even possibly the year after. You know, we take a lot for granted with free cash that comes back to us. Are we gonna get that? Probably not. So we're gonna have, we, we got a lot of things to really take into consideration, and all of them are exceptionally important. However, there's only so much money, and there's only so much of a, a burden that all the taxpayers can handle. So we, we have big problems.
Okay. Byron, back to Joe.
I just saw you all know, I mean, all the guys on the Sewer Commission and Jimmy, they've all been friends of mine for years. These guys have done a wonderful job, and Jim, Jim walked into a, a mess. There's no question about it as far as this is concerned. But to answer your question about the fines, the, OSHA has no authority whatsoever on public buildings, of public entities, Fire Department, DPW. It's the Department of Labor that handles all that. But what happened is, last year, Department of Labor incorporated and inherited and took all the rules and regulations and moved them into their facility. So you might as well say OSHA's here. There was a big Chiefs Association's meeting about it, how it's gonna affect all the fire departments. They gave us a little bit of leeway time if they come in and they walk around and say, you don't have an exhaust system, this electrical's gotta be changed, you don't have any handicap ramps going to your second floor for your public meetings. All this stuff is coming, but they gave us a little waiver time with it. Well, the waiver time's running out. So we are facing the same kind of situation, not as drastic as what Jim's doing. I'm a true supporter of Jim's project, but I was just hoping that maybe we could possibly look at it in phases. That was one of the questions, so that he could take care of his mandates. Now, his argument or his explanation is, is perfect of saving money with the whole 13, because we got together, and we really were hoping that these numbers, when I really looked at these drop-off numbers, would, between the two projects and taking care of the DPW, we kinda take care of three things at once, but the, the numbers at 13 million and eight-point don't support that tax- But the numbers at 13 million and eight point don't support that tax base relief that's coming by 2028 that closely. It's going to be off about $500 per tax household by the looks of the numbers. Now, if people want to absorb that and take on all the projects and clean it all up in once, that would be wonderful, but I don't know if that's realistic in the real world. So again, our committee was trying to do it in, come out as these drop-offs. 2023 was the ladder truck. The high school construction was 2025. Library renovation, 2026. And then the police station was 2028, with a total of $650,000 that was going to be saved in the tax base divided by taxpayers. So we were kind of hit that timeline for the fire station at the 338 valuation at 260. And if you notice in our brochure, we list it as $1.47 per thousand. So if your house is 300,000, you can do the math and know what it's going to cost you. But with the drop-offs, we looked really good, and Jim and I were really hoping that, you know, and again, I'm not, Jim has a good potential of getting that grant to wipe some of this 20%, maybe up to 40%. But again, I call it iffy money. We're having no luck with a bond that's been sitting on the governor's desk for over four years now. There's been a bond with North Brookfield Fire Station on it that Senator Brewer put on the governor's desk. And between all the senators and all the representatives, we haven't been able to get any of that bond. So whether or not we can get grants in this COVID day, I don't know. But our hopes were that we could possibly give him what he needs to take care of the violation, at least at this point. It could cost us a little more in the long run, but we could also come at you and get our fire station and DPW cleaned up at the same, at the same idea and same rates. That's what we were kind of hoping would happen. But Jim and I talked the other day, and we were hoping the numbers would show, but I didn't get together with them tonight. But if you look at these, if you look at these numbers now, it's not going to wash that way. So there'll definitely be a tax increase if we were to vote both projects through. But I do want to support his mission on taking care of this violation and getting upgrades. But I just want to put it all out for thought. There's a lot of these buildings in town that we've been putting off and kicking down the road for a long time, and we got to get these things taken up.
As an engineer, I'd like to speak to the grant part of this, Joe, and that might be informative to you.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Please, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mark Thompson, and Jim introduced us already. I've been personally involved with pursuing these grants for over 20 years with USDA and the DEP SRF program. I don't know, some of you have been around town long enough. I'm sure you know that Rodney Jenkins was successful in getting grants through USDA a number of times, every project he did virtually. And the town is assured that you will get USDA grant money. The question is how much? And I can tell you, the minimum we've seen recently was 25% in the town of Templeton on a project we finished there last year. The maximum grant from USDA is 55%. So I think Jim is right when he says, you know, somewhere in the middle is where we're going to be. And I think, Jim, you mentioned, you know, realistically, it could be 40%. And it could be 30%. But then again, we've also got the SRF money from the state, the DEP program, and that's 9.9% grant, or they call it a, what do they call it again, Jim?
Principal forgiveness.
Oh, yeah, principal forgiveness, otherwise known as a grant. So that's assured. And also, as the early stages of the design, we're going to be redoing some of the planning, not redoing, I shouldn't say it that way, doing some additional planning work and documentation that will assure that the town will get 0% financing from DEP for what they don't get in grants. So 0% loan and, you know, a reasonable, probably 40% expectation. And, you know, anyone is welcome to call these agencies. We can give you contacts there and hear it firsthand if you'd like to. So just trying to clarify the likelihood of some of these grants and loans.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we got two back in the back. Let's start and work our way up the hill.
Brendan Navy Lane Avenue, just want to be clear, the loan term would be 20 years?
That's the terms issued with the state revolving funds.
And the expected life would be about 20 years plus?
So you're, yes, you're looking at a loan expectation of less than the expected life of your products.
And do you know if there's any plans to maybe create a stabilization fund so we wouldn't run into this situation again in 20 years?
As far as I've been involved, that has not been discussed yet.
Patrick Kurtsey III, head in the circle. The engineer just mentioned that the minimum we can expect is 25% from the federal grants. Does any communities ever apply for these and not get it? I mean, are we guaranteed 25% off the cost?
They're saying there haven't been any communities denied?
Yes.
The 25% was the minimum that he stated that they had seen, and it was in the town of Templeton.
That's the minimum. So we're looking at a minimum of taking that number and taking off 25%. That's what we're telling us we're going to be getting tonight from it, right?
I can't state that we're going to be getting. That's what they've seen to date. So judging only on historical...
But there's no communities that's applied that's gotten zero?
That we're aware of? So by theory, we should get 20, 25% off the top almost immediately. We've qualified for USDA, we still qualify for USDA grants.
So in theory, we're looking at a $10 million project?
In theory, yes, sir. And then potential for further grants from there, or even a higher value from rural But as Joe alluded to, it's hard to take, it's a very risky thing to take that into account when you come looking at money.
Right, but that's what I'm questioning right now, because you're saying we're pretty sure to get it, and I'm saying to myself, in this day and age, I'm not sure if we're pretty sure to get it. It's, I mean, we're counting on getting 25 to 40%, but there's no guarantee on that. So if we don't get it, we're looking at the full 13, 14 million for this.
That could potentially be correct.
Okay, is there anything else to be said? Way back down here, Byron.
So this obviously does have to go to a ballot vote outside this room, right?
That's correct.
Correct. When is that?
The next available one, I believe, is November, but it would be scheduled at the earliest availability based on what the voting schedule is. I'm not privy to that.
Which is currently, would be currently November. So if we vote no, then you can't do anything, you can't apply for grants, you can't ask for any money, and we can't move forward at all and we're stuck. But if we vote yes, we can get more information, hopefully find out if we apply for more grants, and then make a decision when it comes as a whole community by ballot vote.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Okay, it's been moved to second, it's moved to question, and does everybody understand what that means, that we would move to vote? Okay.
All those in favor to move to question? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So with the tellers, please come forward, we'll move on to the voting. Again, we're going to do it by row, so be patient with the tellers, and we'll get you up here to vote. The yes votes were 39, no votes were 16, and the motion carries. Okay. Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to repair the locker room floors or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
I move that the town vote to transfer from capital stabilization to school floors repair expense, the sum of $48,532 and no cents to repair the locker room floors.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. It's been moved to second, and is there any discussion? Yes, sir. Clear back in the corner, he'll be right to you.
What was the amount? She wasn't out of microphones, I couldn't hear the amount.
Oh, Byron, could you get the amount?
I'll read the whole motion again, sorry. I move that the town vote to transfer from capital stabilization to school floors repair expense, the sum of $48,532 and no cents to repair the locker room floors.
Okay, $48,000. Anything else to be said? Over here, Byron.
Hi, Debbie Maggio, 27 Fulham Hill Road. I just want to make sure that the quote also includes prevailing wages as was required.
We're not sure, but we don't think the quote that we, the finance committee chose, does include the prevailing wage. So we'll have to probably re-quote it, but we figured we would transfer that money into the flooring account and try to get somebody to address the floors, because if you don't know, the locker room floors pulled up in their hazard, and they were flagged by our building inspector a few years back, and the finance committee was seeking capital expenses to try to update their spreadsheet, and the school put that forward. So that's when it finally reached our attention. So we tried to address it with available funds. The fix, I think, was, was the flooring type, it was a...
We were going to tear up the tile and put epoxy down.
Yeah, epoxy flooring, to meet, so there's no more tile, it's going to be epoxy. I guess the problem was that it sat, the concrete sat before it got tiled, and now it's bad, and if you try to tile it again, it'll just pull up. So this is designed to be a more permanent fix. So we're looking to just start some money in that direction to make the fix. So to answer your question, I don't think that the bid that they are funding is prevailing wage.
Anything else to be said?
$28,000 seems like an awful lot of money for a floor. How many bids went out? How'd that whole process work?
So the building and grounds person at the school, Marty, he put it out to bid, and he tried to get bids for months and months and months, and he got two bids. There was one bid for, I believe it was for an epoxy, and it was for somewhere around $25,000 more than the one that we voted to approve the money for, to get it started. The other thing about the one that we did approve as a board, it included a lot of extra stuff as well, such as the VCT that was peeling up in the hallway outside the locker rooms. And as far as it being a lot of money, the job entails taking out all the fixtures, the benches, the dividers between restroom areas, like stalls for the bathrooms, in all the locker rooms, all the coaches' offices, and that's the locker rooms visiting and our own teams' locker rooms, both girls and boys, and then putting them all back in after the floors are done. Okay? And it entails taking up all the tile, chipping up all the loose thinset, and then pouring an epoxy finish over that and using a flake system to, well, make it look nice and also help make it skid-proof. So it'll be a lot safer and a lot more permanent than what's there now, so.
No, I'm familiar with epoxy floor. I just didn't understand the whole, you had to remove everything.
Yes, and they did go out to bid, they did ask for bids, but only two bids came back in all that time. It was like six months or so.
Clear back in the back, Byron.
I was just curious, one, is this for the elementary school, or for the high school, or for both? And if you could clarify what prevailing wage is?
It's for the high school locker room floors, and prevailing wage is a statute that requires certain construction projects that are municipal or state in nature to pay a certain fee for certain functions. So whereas you could put it out to a bid to a local contractor, and they would pay whatever they pay their people, because it's a municipality and because it's a certain type of repair to a municipal building, those fees are set by state statute. So we would have to figure out who's doing the work and what the prevailing wage for that job is, and then make sure they get paid for it.
Just to clarify, then, this appropriation does not necessarily lock in this particular contractor who you've gotten the quote from, considering it appears that it doesn't, they don't have the prevailing wage?
Yeah, this won't lock in a contractor, this is just a money transfer to the school to use for the purposes of replacing and repairing that floor. So they're free to go out and rebid it and use that money towards it. So it may end up being that we'll need to try to find another $10,000, $20,000 if, in fact, the prevailing wage turns out to be more.
Okay, anything else to be said? Anything at all? All right, if the tellers come forward, we'll go do another ballot vote. Again, this will be two-thirds. If you are in favor of the article, you vote yes. Okay, the motion carries with 41 votes, yes. And on to the next motion. Let's see, we're on to three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to purchase 14 portable radios for the fire department or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from capital stabilization to the fire portable radio expense, the sum of $12,702.06 for the purchase of 14 portable radios for the fire department.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Byron, you have a hand up right there.
Darren Anderson, eight started, please.
Say that again?
I'm seconding it.
Oh, it's already been seconded, Darren. But thank you anyways. Anything else to be said? Chief, you want to give a little explanation on the radios here, being we, just a brief one?
I'm always brief. We love you guys. We have 14 radios now that are 20 years old, they've been in disrepair, we've been trying to use them. These are firefighters' radios that they go into the buildings with. We're trying to build our bank up to 28 and replace, start replacing them now. So we're in dire need of these radios, so that's why they're on the warrant.
Jason, motions. Okay, anything else to be said? Anything at all? Okay, let's do another one. Is this money, is appropriation directly for those radios? It's not going anywhere else?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we still got to do a ballot vote. Article two.
Right on track.
Okay, that passed with 50 yes votes and one no, so I think that was a two-thirds. All right, Article four, to see if the town will vote to rescind a portion of the amounts appropriated under Article Four of June 5, 2020 Annual Town Meeting as follows, and further move that the town vote to transfer the amounts as follows. Rescind $26,197 from the junior senior high school maturing debt and transfer $29,197... $26,197 from the junior senior high school maturing debt and transfer $29,197 to the...
It should be $26,197.
This is just the article.
Oh, sorry.
The motion will fill that in. For the reserve for the junior high, junior senior high school premium and junior senior high school maturing debt. Rescind $1,347 from the library maturing debt and transfer $1,347 from the reserve library premium to the library maturing debt. Rescind $7,142.86 from the fire truck maturing debt and transfer $7,142.86 from the fire truck fund balance to the fire truck maturing debt. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind a portion of the amounts appropriated under Article 4 of the June 5, 2020 Annual Town Meeting as follows, and further move that the town vote to transfer the amounts as follows. Rescind $26,197 from the junior senior high school maturing debt and transfer $26,197 from the reserve for junior senior high school premium to the junior senior high school maturing debt. Rescind $1,347 from the library maturing debt and transfer $1,347 from the reserve library premium to the library maturing debt. Rescind $7,142.86 from the fire truck maturing debt and transfer $7,142.86 from the fire truck fund balance to the fire truck maturing debt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Thank you, sir. Any discussion at all? All those in favor signify by raising your hands. Opposed, same sign. The motion Article 5, to see if the town will vote to supplement its vote adopted under Article 1 of the warrant at the special town meeting held February 17, 2017, which vote authorized the borrowing of $3,909,508 to pay the cost of remodeling the North Brookfield Elementary School. To provide that, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Subsection 20, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any premium applied to be payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to pay the project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed. For such project costs shall be reduced by the amount of any said, or any such premium so applied. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to supplement its vote adopted under Article 1 of the warrant at the special town meeting held on February 17, 2017, which voted, which vote authorized the borrowing of $3,909,508 to pay costs of remodeling North Brookfield Elementary School. To provide that, in accordance with Mass. General Law, is that chapter, Chapter 44, Section 20, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed. For such project costs, such, for such project costs shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Is there a second?
Second.
It moved seconded. Is there any discussion?
Could you explain this?
It takes 100 words to say that.
Is there anything else to be said? Anything at all? All right, this is going to be a two-thirds vote, but we don't have to have a ballot. So we're going to vote it backwards. Those that are not in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. Those that are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I'll call that unanimous. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds the sum of $85,197.89 to make the first payment on the lease purchase agreement for the new fire truck or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from capital stabilization to fire truck lease expense, the sum of $85,197.89 to make the first payment on the lease purchase agreement for the new fire truck.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there anything to be said on the article? Joe? Okay, Byron?
Yeah, this is the new rescue truck. It's the lease payment. And again, this funding is coming from Green Gold towards the fire truck. And the last fire truck for $500,000 was done by a grant also. So we've gotten three trucks in the last couple of years. It cost the town absolutely nothing, over a million dollars worth. We thank the selectmen and everybody involved with that. And just a side note during the break, speaking about the grants for that last issue we were talking about, I totally support the Sewer Department with their endeavors with that. I think we'll be in good shape with the grants.
Thanks, Joe. Is there anything else to be said? Down here, Byron. We got two. First, Ms. Crevear, and then down to...
It says for the first payment. This is the first payment. Does this mean that we have to come to a meeting, town meeting? Is this an annual thing that we have to do?
No. So one of the town meetings, we had authorized the lease of this truck, and it was going to be financed by the host community agreement with Green Gold, the marijuana cultivation facility. Well, due to COVID and the shutdown, and they couldn't sell their product, they weren't giving any money to the town, and we tried to set up a couple of accounts, and the accountant we had, who's no longer with us, wasn't able to set up the accounts the right way, and it was a huge delay. So we have accounts in place. Green Gold's paying, but there's not enough money in there to make the first payment. So we're going to take it out of the capital stabilization to make the first payment, and when that account catches up, we're going to replace it back into capital stabilization. So it's just a temporary measure.
Okay, down to, no, you don't need to. Okay. Anything else to be said? Anything at all? Okay, we need two-thirds on this, but it doesn't have to be a ballot. So it's going to be backwards. Those that are not in favor of this article, please raise your hands. Those that are, please raise your hands. All right, I'll call that unanimous. Very good. Is there anything else to come before this meeting? If not, I would look for a motion. Say again?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
How about dissolve? If you dissolve it, we can do it. Okay, is there a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. And, all right, all those in favor signify by raising your hands. Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much for your patience, and stay well.